Okay, it is four oh five, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. And let's go ahead and start with road call, please. Sis is not here, uh she sent me an email last week saying that she was gonna be out of town. Furla?
Yeah.
Mike? Brayden? Hopefully he'll be here soon. Amy?
Here.
Mary, Slinker? Yep, okay. And then we have our staff, uh Mary Ramirez and Vicky Basso here. And we have lots of visitors. I remember Hector and I remember Junior and Karen and Michelle. And, that's all mine.
Oh.
Not bad for a seven year old. Alright, and just an FYI, all our guests, I mean you're here to, you know, listen and hear what we're doing. And I'm sorry, but you're not allowed to give your opinion.
Gee.
I know, I would really like it, but I've been told that's the way that this works. So, we'll go with the rules.
Question. So who last time that like we were here and like, for example, like Junior, or not Junior, sorry, um Hector had like, uh input, is that something that's, that's not allowed in conversation, sorry? Really?
You can, you guys can bring your ideas to us, if I understand right. And then we will discuss it and decide if we need to take it and send it with Mary to Raul, who will take it to council. And there and stuff like that, okay.
So how can we bring those forward, is it here?
Talk to me.
Okay.
Just talk to me.
Okay.
No problem. Or you can talk to any of, any of the board members and we'll get it on the agenda or something to discuss it. See how that works, okay? Alright, so our first, um, activity on the agenda is to approve the minutes from January fourth at a regular meeting. Did everyone get a chance to read and go over those? And do I get anyone to, uh, motion to approve these minutes?
Make the motion.
Wait, anyone second it?
Second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes, okay. Next is B, which is calendar of events for twenty twenty four. And as we were doing last time, we were talking, talking with Mary and she was showing us all what she has on her calendar, uh upcoming events, which is also discussed in the minutes, and so.
I should've done color, but anyways. So I did kind of a little bit of what we have so far, like, set for the year. Um, I did throw in three peaks painting, um, cause I do want to bring that in. It's just getting times, um, and dates and what specifically I want to do. So, um, I put May, cause I'm thinking maybe we can do that, something for Mother's Day there. Um, and then the last one I left open, cause I'm thinking maybe we can bring her in for December. Um, that still works, but other than that, it's pretty much just, you know, mother, son, Easter egg hunt, um, the Easter brunch, we got our summer programs that we're gonna do in June. Uh, we got the pool that's gonna, um, that's scheduled. Um, and I do have already my lifeguard instructor to, uh, scheduled for any new lifeguards that will be applying, that need to be certified. So, um, I got that already scheduled. Um, soccer program, we're gonna start that, um, hoping to start that. Um, the last week in August, all the way till the end of September. Um, still kind of finding that one out, cause I might push it up even to mid-August. Um, and then the spooky fall festival, so we'll start. I have dates in there when I'm gonna start more or less working on them. Um, and then maybe even sooner, just cause we have, um, helping position coming up for a rec coordinator. So if we can get someone in, once it's posted and out and hired, then hopefully we can get that going faster and sooner than what the dates are on here. But we'll see, wait on that.
Aren't you the rec coordinator?
Supervisor.
Supervisor. What's the difference between a supervisor and a coordinator?
The coordinator will help coordinate more of the stuff here and then they'll be able to supervise.
So they will work under you?
Under me. So, and then.
We'll still have.
We'll still have Lisa. Yes, we will still have her because we need the center open. And then, um, and then so, and then we got the Thanksgiving, um, meal that will happen and yeah. So so far that's it, um, but I could potentially add more as time comes.
So where is three peak thing?
Yeah, that's my question. So she is, um, so what she does is she does like, uh, boards. And you paint them. She has cutting boards, so she does, I don't know.
That what they do like at the winery, you see that?
They do at the wineries or, you know.
This is the same girl that just did one at the Eagles?
At the Eagles, yes. So, but.
Is it like a painting?
They paint like, well, whatever she cuts out. So she has boards that are cut out already and then whatever that they are, um, you just paint it to like, you know, if you want it hot pink, cause that's your favorite and that's, you know, stuff like that. Um, but I wanted to bring her here to see if maybe we can get kids involved. You know, cause I know that, you know, the Eagles did it and that was fine, but that was more adults and it has the, you know, alcohol and I know, I wanted more something for kids, so that involve the kids and, and maybe even a parent. So that way, you know, if I was thinking Mother's Day, because maybe, you know, daughter, mom or son, you know. Um, so.
And your summer program, that is your summer camp?
That is my summer camp. So here's a picture of what we kinda did. And they were all little pieces, so Santa was like, literally a part, you painted him and, and then you put them together and then the welcome was same, it was welcome with one piece. Uh, the black behind it was another and all different things. But she does, I mean, this was good for Christmas, cause it looked good for Christmas. Um, but she does other, uh, things too, so. For me, I, mine, I did a blue background with clouds and then my trees were all different colors. So, you know, you just do to what your, um, aesthetics are, so. I just wanted to see if maybe we could do something like that, but with the kids, you know. Or even, you know, even if I just get her for December, just to have an event here besides, you know, the festival of trees, maybe start doing a little bit more crafts in here or something, so, yeah.
And that's why you're here, Director, right, is to offer a hopefully that we can help you from, and so it's actually.
So, yep, and that's the calendar.
For the soccer program?
Mm-hmm.
Last year, you started later, right?
Yeah, we started later, and we started like, uh, the third week of September, or like those. Yeah, school had already started, no, it was the first weekend of September, on Saturday. And then we led all the way to October, but like the last week.
It got cold.
It really got cold, so I'm trying to push it up.
I'm just saying like August, a lot of times they get pushed because it's too hot. Cause I was, but you guys started.
We do it in the morning and I try and get, I mean, depending on how many teams we get, I try and have it done by noon.
Okay.
So, um, the three fields we had out there, I mean, it worked pretty good, cause I had, you know, three, two, six teams on the field playing at the same time and then the next round, you know, round came and then, uh, they were done by noon.
Would it be an option to have two soccer programs, one in the spring and one in the fall?
Potentially. We could start, not to see.
Yes, I'm just throwing it out there.
I'm gonna, well, cause what I'm doing too is I'm gonna write out to, um, Parker Youth again and see if maybe we can get more, um, T-ball equipment, because T-ball was pretty big.
Really?
And, um, they might, I, I'm, I'm kind of thinking it might be a little bit bigger. And if it is, I don't have equipment for more teams. So I'm gonna try and reach out to them and see if I can get that and then, you know, build on soccer and do that.
So are you open up to doing more than just T-ball?
Yes.
Do it for the older kids?
I'm gonna, to, well, I'm gonna, uh, try and incorporate this year, coach, coach pitch, for the coaches pitch. Um, so I'm gonna try and do that and, but I wanna talk to also, I'm gonna reach out to Fuente Miguel. Cause he's with Cal Ripken, so I just wanted to touch base with him and then just go and see what, what his thoughts are and then.
Cause I know there used to be, and there's probably still out there somewhere. Um, where Cal Ripken, uh, did a, a special with the kids that was a, a tournament sort of thing, that they ended up, when they played like the T-ball approach pitch and, and apple whatever, they got to go into, uh, tournament style. And they ended up going like playing in Yakima and then going to Olympia and then they also got to go to the World Series.
And that's when Cal Ripken had them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and here it would be Parks and Rec, so, but I mean, because that's why it was getting a little too spendy for T-ball on Cal Ripken's end. That's why he had asked if this, last year we would be able to do it and so we were like, yeah, let's try it. So it's slowly coming this way.
Any more discussion on, uh, our calendar of upcoming events? Brayden, how are you doing over there?
I'm doing good.
Good, awesome.
Wanna put on?
That father, daughter.
Probably one I need to add.
And that'll be. What are you thinking during that one?
That was probably gonna be about, mm, July?
June is Father's Day. I'm just trying, you know, like, put your events in with the holiday.
Yeah. Yeah, but sometimes that doesn't work quite well.
I'm just.
Yeah, I'll put June, July in here. So, um, I know, is, uh, I think that's all of them.
Anything else? Cool, cool is a whole program all by itself.
Yes, yes. So if all my yeses come back like they said, we could, we'll, we'll be okay. And then just getting the new ones now, just training and certifying, we should be okay.
Yeah, we hope.
So, yeah.
Okay, so you got Thanksgiving meal, are we, are you thinking of doing anything for Christmas?
Christmas, it just, I haven't put anything in December, just because in the past they blocked out three whole weeks for the, um, festival trees.
Oh, that's right.
So that's why it's kind, I'm kind of like, okay.
Okay.
Um, I have to.
The festival of trees is a given.
Does she, Elizabeth likes to keep all the traditional stuff, so, yeah.
And the hospital took that over, right?
Yes.
So it will most likely happen.
So, yeah.
One more then, any other questions or concerns there? Okay, so moving on to item four, items from the committee members. Where's everything? Mike?
So I wasn't here at the last meeting, but did you guys see, did you present the colors?
Oh, yes.
I didn't get to see them, so I don't know if they're pink, yellow, or.
They're colored the.
For the pool house?
Oh, we're, we're going with blues and grays. And a
outside is gonna say that it's gonna be gray.
Okay.
Matched that up. And then the inside, we had, um, like the light stone gray.
Yeah, the lighter one.
The lighter one. And then the blue walls. This is the one I couldn't remember.
If we go there, uh, apparently it's gonna be something. I think it was a sapphire. It was sapperberry.
Yeah, okay. So and then over, so the yellow walls were gonna be, um, just gonna match up to the rest of them.
So we're staying in a tone of blue because.
Water, water. No, no bright neon yellow and so when you walk in and you're not gonna go.
So now, the walls are being painted, the lockers, anything that's yellow will be painted.
The lighter, the lighter gray, except the, the wall, the wall's gonna stay all blue like the others. So there's not gonna be a two tone.
And the shower, the main shower pole.
That's good, they're gonna try and get that yellow off and keep it stainless steel.
Oh, good.
So trying to scrape the tile to make it tile color again and scrape all the same with steel to make it stainless steel again.
So that that ugly looking glue on the tile, they're, they're gonna try to scrape.
He's gonna talk to them and see if, uh, there's something that we can do or not, yes.
Now, what about the shower stalls itself? Is that color, that dark blue gonna change?
Shower stalls?
I mean, gonna shower stall, bathroom stall.
Oh, so he's gonna also talk to them regarding that, because those are not painted, those are the actual doors.
Right.
And so he's gonna try and see what we can do to try and get those back to either its original, um. He doesn't kind of wanna get them painted, because the same, if it comes off the tile and it doesn't stick, we're gonna go back to the same issue. Um, but he's gonna talk to them regarding those as well, that those will say those dark blue. And that's why they went lighter on the out, to keep those.
But those, uh, both walls can be, those bathroom walls can be painted. Is that, I mean, cause what, they, somebody painted over the original?
The bathroom walls are.
I mean, the, the stalls, the, you know, where you go, you close the door.
Uh-huh, the, the doors.
Those are original.
Those are original. And so something was used to clean the media and it just stayed like it's always dirty, even though it's wiped down and but it's constant, we have that. So he's gonna talk to them and see if maybe there's something that just can remove that. And if not, then that'll probably be another thing, if we have to replace those, that'll roll in just.
Cause they make stuff, I mean, they make coatings that will adhere to that type of material, so.
And yes, yeah, so and that's what he's gonna ask them, since that's part of that painting brand, like.
And the outside of the building is gonna be the color that it is, because it matches the graffiti paint.
Yeah.
And so, when they graffiti, that's a little hearts. We can pretty well match it up pretty good when we cover it up.
So is the, is the, uh, facilities for everyday park use, public use, are, is that gonna get painted also or touched at all?
The bathrooms on the outside?
Yeah. Inside, you know, just, those are, they, they look pretty, pretty rough.
I can ask them if that's part of it, since it's part of the pool house.
Okay.
Cause right now we are just trying to get this in the inside of the pool. Um, I didn't really discuss the bathrooms, um, but that I can ask Andrew. And see if that's part of it, which I'm pretty sure it might be.
Yeah, cause I would think.
Because it's the whole, yes.
Yeah.
So I'm pretty sure it will be.
And we don't know who, we, it's still gotta put it out for bits.
Yes, so I'm working on that, he already sent me a list of, um, from the small works roster, I was to go through, so. I'm gonna, I'm working on that, we already picked two, I just need to pick either one or two more, cause we need three.
Right.
Any other comments or concerns that members have? Brayden, you have anything you wanted to talk about or anything?
In connection to.
Anything that you have.
I'm not sure, there's always the option to contact, uh, clubs and stuff in high school, so whatever anyone else needs, I can provide that.
And so you'll have to contact the school?
Yeah.
And I saw that new sign they put out for the skate park, it was pretty nice.
Oh, yeah. And then the trees are gone.
Yeah, Raul, and we were just talking last week, and Raul was like, the trees, have you been by us? And I was by when they were cut them. Oh, drive by again.
And they're gone.
They're gone.
So now, because the trees are done, that's, this is the next step, so we're going into that next step, so.
Miss Amy, do you have anything you wanna discuss or talk about?
No.
Okay, I'm back, so. We're glad to have you back. Ms. Furla?
No.
No? Okay. We give everybody an opportunity to bring up some stuff, I know our newest member here is anxious, but. Yeah. So. Alright, so that's all that's on our agenda, other than what we're gonna talk about next, uh, meeting. And next meeting, um, Mary and I were informed this like two days ago that we as a board are supposed to have elections every January. So, if you would like to be president, chair, whatever you wanna call it, you know, raise your hand. Um, I elected, otherwise we would've had to change up this agenda and everything, so I elected to inform everyone that we have to have these. So we will have them next month at our next meeting. So please think, if you would like to be chair, please raise your hand.
For nominations?
Yeah, nominations, whatever.
Okay, nominate the same president?
Mm-hmm, that's why I've been told you can.
Do you have a description of each, uh, thing?
Is that what's on?
No.
I don't think there's descriptions.
Yeah, this package, but we.
Yeah.
The difference, you're listening to me?
No.
Not even in, um.
I think there might be online.
And see, that's another thing we need to talk about, because we've got at least one person who hasn't been here since last June. And we need to find out, you know, does she still want to be a part, anybody, if you still wanna be a part of the Parks and Rec Commission? You know, how do we handle this? How do we, you know, say yay, you can leave, no, you have to stay, whatever it is.
I, according to council, the mayor or deputy mayor has to go in. You're supposed to go in, let them know, and then they will talk to that person and let them know if they're want to be on the boards still or not, from what I understood.
Yeah, and Elizabeth was here last time and we kinda touched that and she's like, it's gonna change totally to the mayor. It's gonna be a different group taking care of the people that had attendance and stuff, so it won't be just the mayor deciding, I'm like, oh, okay, cause I assumed it was, usually the mayor is the one that appoints people to, you know, their little.
Well, when I applied, I was asked, and then I had to fill out an application and do a certificate and then hand that in and then it was up to the mayor to call me in, right?
I only have a certain amount of year terms. And then when those are up, you renew. And then when you renew, you will go through the new process, um, so.
I think that's what we have to do this yearly, elections, yearly, the new board members.
So I know sometimes, and I know of one individual that was on a board and his term of that, he was not asked for that. You have, the mayor have that option.
You don't get asked for that, you have to fill out the form.
Yeah. Then he may, it's not gonna be, he may have done it.
Yeah, but now the new rule, from what I understood when she was here, it sounded like they were gonna review our application and then we were gonna be interviewed by mayor, deputy mayor, someone else maybe?
I think it's three.
Three people, I, I don't know. You know? Nope, I said now, I, I, I don't know if it's got to the board committee and those folks have actually been enacted. Um, I, I would say no, um, from looking at, um, the current working group. Um, if it's in conversation and then something that still has this problem, we just. Sorry, I asked her.
I know, I know.
Okay, yeah. We'll just, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I get, yeah.
And I have that habit too, I like to ask questions of people who might know.
I know it all, I like to ask.
Yeah.
And make sure.
Me too. So Mary, is there maybe, um, we can find out?
The roles?
Do a new, new application or?
I can instruct you.
From what council says, they were just gonna review and see, and then if your term is not up, because then if you look at some of these guidelines, I think they were gonna make sure everybody applies. Again, not applied, but everybody meets the criteria we're on, like. So like, I know in some, like you have, on fun boards, we should have like somebody from the school district.
Yes, somebody.
Yeah, so that's this one, so the school district, the student, um, a council, a business.
We have to have a staff.
Yeah, and I gave it to, yeah, I printed that out, the, to me.
User representative. And then we have the other ones that are open. One, two, three, four, five, other ones that are, or other ones that are open.
Yeah. So for the most part, that we have everyone that filled that, if, um, if, I call her Miss Mary.
Yeah.
If Miss Mary does not return for any reason, um, then yes, we're gonna open up her, uh, elementary or teacher, because that's what, that was where, where she filled in, so.
So then we're, are we gonna get notified when our term is up, then? You should have, Pats, Jackie has notified that person and they say like, hey, your term is up. Would you like to continue? And you say yes or no, and then it goes to mayor. And then you reassign from previous, but I don't know if they're gonna switch it up this year. And when they switch it up, are we gonna find out?
That's what.
By reassigned, but are you reassigned, are you talking about council? Cause council every year gets new spots, that's what I heard him say.
No, but like when you're on the board, you come serve for someone to text, you say my term is up, then they'll ask you, do you wanna serve another four years or do you want to?
For a different committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, like, so if you don't, so I can say if my four years are up, I can say I still wanna commit. And then I don't think if nobody has applied to give that person a chance.
That's what happened on my commissioner. My term, I already used up my term, so then we're gonna find the mayor and say, hey, I would like to stay on, and then that's all.
Okay.
So what I was gonna ask is if Mary, you could point out this information and then email all of us. So please, everyone check your email here and so we.
I don't have access to mine again.
Again?
No, I got it, but then it doesn't let me have that. I mean, I changed our password, it must change. Yeah, I read that, definitely. Yeah, so I think it's forward to my personal, cause that's what they give for elements, and I can.
They'll probably have to send a ticket into the help desk.
Yeah, cause he went over it and he still, it took him a while and it didn't work and then we called me back and then it finally went through. So then I was able to check it for a while and then it kicked me out.
So, yeah, probably send a ticket into help desk.
I have the, I forgot his name, but he called me, he gave me his number.
Yeah, but now they're tracking it through tickets, so just go, just help, just put help desk. And then it's at Sunny Side, you know.
Okay, I'll just.
And then, uh, just let them know and then they'll contact you. Cause it'll be either Jafed or Dennis, either way.
Oh.
Um, yeah. So, uh, find out if we're doing new applications, descriptions on chairs.
Yes.
And just those two?
I believe so.
Okay.
That's what we need to know, right? So we can do our vote next month.
And then terms are up.
Yeah.
Okay. And then if there's a description that.
I put description on chairs, yeah, there's, it's just, uh, the chair and the vice chair. And then secretary.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else that we need to do?
So can we ask about our people that are here, or are we allowed to? So can we ask about our people that are here, or are we allowed to?
Yeah, I would like to see.
I would too.
I think that we are able to, you have to amend it.
You have to amend the rule, I think during the meeting.
Cause see, when I saw, and I could be wrong, but when I saw the meeting at city council here, just the one, this last one. You know, the the kind of new council members was told, or even the old ones, that when you're ten, you're there just to listen. But I never heard anything about if we have visitors come or what, that they can't talk to whatever. Commissioner, or this, I'm I'm kinda confused now that you said that they can't, cause.
I know for LTAC, we have to vote if they're able to talk, but do we need wanna ask them a question? And we have to vote, and then everybody has to agree.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Wow.
I mean, they they came all the way, I mean, it'd be nice to see what they gotta say. But I don't know, it's up to you guys.
So. And we put a motion out there to invite the visitors to speak, and offer us what they have to offer.
I made a motion.
I second that.
All those in favor?
I am.
Alright, yay. Alright, so can we start, start with Hector? Please?
I was just here, I mean, following up on, you know, last, the last meeting, you know, on the soccer and stuff, you know. Uh I don't know if there's any update on the volleyball situation.
Or indoor?
Or just having volleyball, this, you know, added.
When I talked, it was for the outdoor.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um I haven't talked to anybody regarding that, um again. Um but I can bring that up, cause right now I'm focusing on Upland Park. Cause I'm trying to get those um quotes and get that going, so I've been focusing on Upland Park for that, so I didn't bring up volleyball.
What about for maybe doing an indoor, you know?
Indoor, I do have the poles here, um we actually.
I I get asked a lot, hey, you know, where's where do we play volleyball at?
So what they're kinda doing though is, cause I did co-ed for, for C K.
Yeah.
That's what they wanna bring back, my gym's not big enough for that. And they did three courts. So it was six teams on a court every time, and then they'd rotate. So I know what they're trying to bring back, because they've asked me, but my court here, that's, it's not big enough.
Yeah.
And I don't even think it would be big enough for two.
Are we able to talk to the schools and?
I've tried. Right now, because they, they're so booked with all the school sports, it's kinda hard for them to squeeze in right now. And then um the last time I had spoke to them, um they were allowing indoor soccer, and that took over. The volleyball um timeframe, because nobody had. Taken charge of the volleyball from when the last I know, when COVID happened. So like, there was always a representative that took care of that and had the insurance. And, you know, we paid them and did the groups and the teams, but there was a person that was in charge of that. And COVID happened and it stopped, and then I think it got filled with all the other sports, and then indoor soccer for a little bit. And then um now that, and now wrestling started, little guys, and then. The girls wrestling got bigger.
Yeah.
Than what they, you know, than what it has. And then with the years prior, so then that took up gym time, and then yes, club volleyball, so. That's pretty much.
Yeah.
Why it's been on a hold, yeah, that's kinda pretty much why it's been on a hold, yes.
And then, um another thing I wanna bring up was, have, have, have you guys, you know, um. Parks and Rec ever considered bringing in uh mentors? Like, from, let's say, State Yackam Valley, I don't know if you guys have heard of them.
I've never heard of.
A mentor program, prevention program, I'm actually on it. Um, you know, kids can sign up, they, you know, we're looking for mentors, maybe even during the summertime.
Mm-hmm.
Um they can come and meet here, you know, do activities here, play sports here, stuff like that.
Like a big brother?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm actually, I'm actually a mentor at Harrison.
Oh, I think they were asking for applications, but I wasn't sure, and I had asked for more info, and they were like, uh. There wasn't that much.
I'm, I'm just asking, cause I know there's a lot of here that, you know, come summertime, a lot of the parents are out.
Yeah, and that's the other thing is too, is since I have the summer program here.
Yeah.
It's, um I wouldn't be opposed to bringing in mentors to help them. Um but if they needed their own space, where am I gonna put them?
Yeah.
Because I already turned my conference room into a storage room, so I have no, I don't have a conference room. So you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not opposed to come, people coming in, it's just if we're gonna be doing like a summer program, and then. And that they need their own space, where do I put them?
No, I just figured.
Yeah, no, and and they're more than welcome to stop by, or you're more than welcome and give me more information. Um and see where maybe we can even squeeze them in, even if it's not the summer.
Yeah.
You know, winter break, I don't know, spring break.
No, not at all, so it's just, um, so the mentor program is, um, like right now, the school council is.
Cause it's three quarters.
Oh, sorry. And um. The mentor comes in and just kinda, you know, gets involved a little bit with the, with the.
So you just need a space? So it doesn't matter how big.
It doesn't matter how big the space is.
Like religious, um.
No, not at all, not at all, um I mean, there, as long as. You know, the student and the s- the students, you know, guardians or parents are okay with it, they have no issue with it.
So I got, the reason I'm saying this, cause I got a space right now that um, that has, it's a, it's over there by a. It's a black church right next to.
Okay.
They have an area there that has pool table, pool's wall, big screen TV, couches, ping pong. And they're looking just to fill that space with.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I'm a part of that, literally, I can, I can literally get the keys for it, but if you have a sp- a a certain time. They'll value that time, long as it's a, um you have someone that's there with you.
Yeah.
At all time.
Okay.
Um there's also, also two opposite areas upstairs that can be utilized too.
Well, we'll be in touch.
Yeah, yeah, talk to me, definitely, cause I, I, they're gonna talk with Patrick in a day about.
Let us know if it happens.
Yeah, definitely, cause I mean, it's something that we need, so.
Yeah.
In fact, I mean, I don't know if you, you're busy tonight, but we're gonna meet over there at six thirty.
Six thirty.
You can stop by and I can show you there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stop by.
Yeah.
Sounds good. I have nothing, no, so.
Thank you, thank you. You're here, what are you presenting today?
No, I was just here, just kinda uh listening, trying to, trying to get a point of view of this, and I'll get further with the process of it. I, I read the rules of, a lot of rules, the old one. When I was in prison, but I'm trying to see it kind of in action now. And eventually I'll have things, eventually, probably next.
And just so you guys know, you're always invited to come back at any time and hear what we're doing. You know, and hopefully we can amend the the agenda a little bit, like what you did just now, and. Get you guys to talk to us about what you have your ideas on, and maybe help us out.
I have a question, is there anything going on here for spring break? Do you have anything planned?
Spring break, that's in April?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
And I think it.
That's normally the first week, right?
Yeah, it's the first of it.
We don't think we have anything planned here, like activity wise.
Okay. Cause I know, it's not set in stone, but my daughter was talking with uh Rob Lehman to do a CSI camp, since that's part of her. Well, they call it, it's community service, but then now the Miss America program calls it a CSI. So that's something probably they're gonna come up with, um and then do, do a CSI camp, so they'll probably do like. Something for the kids, but I didn't want it to reflect if you had something already planned.
Oh, no, and I wanna, um, and I was talking to Andrew today. Um I'm gonna start digging into and talking to more to our uh Washington City's insurance. Um I wanna see more about bringing maybe a camp here, like whether it's a basketball camp, a volleyball camp. Um just for the kids to have something to do. But partnering in doing that, not just saying, oh yeah, you can use the facility, cause I can't do that, just give it away. So, yeah, I was talking to him, cause you know, camps during, like, yeah, during that spring break and during winter break. I know my kids just sit there and I'm like, okay. Okay, uh Michelle, you have anything you would like to ask us, or talk about?
Well, I'm just happy to be here, and then about all this new information, stuff and.
And I don't know if I can say this, but I'm going to. So uh Miss Sunny Side Court and Sunny Side Senior Center are hosting their annual uh Valentine Dance for the seniors. So you know, anyone fifty plus of age, please bring them down Saturday. February tenth, from eleven AM to three PM, it is free. And you two ladies need to get your moms, we uh we registered with the membership with the senior center, and.
They're also doing bingo on Sunday.
Sunday, but that's a assisted living.
Yes.
Yeah. From one thirty to four thirty.
So I have a question about people, or is it just seniors?
At ours, yes. Yeah, cause otherwise. Being with the uh gambling commission, um I can only allow Sunny Side seniors members to play bingo. I allow the handicap to play. We only charge a quarter a card, and all money has to go back to the players the same day, okay? Unlike Crosser, who has a license for gambling, so they can charge what they wanna charge per card. And they can give out gifts if they want instead of the cash. And I didn't want to go through all that. Legal stuff.
Yeah.
Make it nice and simple and.
Yours is different than the standard one.
Yes. Yeah, cause we need a gambling license and all that. And in our little white book over there at the senior center, all that information is in there, so if anyone ever wants to read up on it, you're more than welcome to check it out. Alright, anything else, anyone? Are we good?
Can, can I ask a question?
Sure, can.
What's going on back there? There's a mural, so we have that up, which is hidden.
Oh, this brick to put it along?
Yeah.
How cool.
Oh, and um. They wanted something different back there, so. Chase came up with the mural, and it has, I think he's gonna put words. But he has kids in the background, my, it's not very, you're more than welcome to, he, he has a bird. We're gonna check it out, yeah.
Oh, is it with things?
Chase.
Oh.
Sunny Side, yeah.
Football, pickleball, those pickleballs.
Yeah.
Yeah, um the soccer goal, and then, you know. It's really cool. Yeah, it's not quite done, it should be. It'd be, it's not for sure next. Um, but yeah.
Alright, so do we have anything else that we need to discuss, board members, okay? So our next meeting will be the first Thursday of March, which is March seventh. Four PM here. And you guys are sure, can we adjourn this?
March when?
March seventh. The first Thursday? At four PM. And I believe, I like to call this, then we're adjourned, please, it is four fifty PM.